Students, we're going to ask that you come down to the front of the auditorium. We've had some issues with noise and interruptions for the meetings, so we're going to invite you to the front of the auditorium, okay? Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay, I'd like to excuse Kay Sepharata from the meeting for health concern reasons, and also Bob and Mike Marizio. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Michael Whitehead-Hastings, a 1994 graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And let's move into our budget presentations. Do we want to start with athletics?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll start with the athletic budget for next year. There is not a tremendous change other than requests for more supply money, but if you'll see, the salaries are a good majority of it. The support salaries are to athletic trainers. Equipment is the same from last year. Memberships. And our officials is a little increase due to their contractual amounts. Same thing with contracted services. That is for our rental fees, things that we pay out for repairs. And then general supplies. So if you look at the variance for salaries again, increase due to contractual. And again, increase with general supplies was the biggest increase. Now, the explanation. We've been hanging on by bare threads here with some of our uniforms and equipment. For example, our wrestling mats need to be reconditioned. We've had some issues with some skin, ringworm and stuff, and so we're going to try to get that done next year. So, any questions on the athletic piece?
Do you have any idea what percentage of your budget has been brought to us by donations?
No, but thankfully for the booster clubs, as far as uniforms and that, I think in three years I've been here, I think I've bought maybe one set of uniforms.
And the boosters have either provided them or... I was just curious.
Yeah, they've been very generous in helping us get through. Next is physical education, and if you look, the majority is contracted services, and that can be the servicing of weight equipment in the weight rooms in the different buildings, supply money, mileage for traveling teachers. There is no variance from last year. We're pretty much staying with the same budget we worked with this year. So with phys ed and athletics, you know, we're continuing to work with our booster clubs and making sure that we have what we need to get through. And Don and I have worked together with the sponsor recognition program, which is up and running. We did have one come through so far, and we're hoping that that continues to build some more revenue for the district. Some of our scoreboards, specifically at Bragman, we need some replacement parts with that, so... And then in summary, in the last eight years, we had the gap elimination meeting. We've had 22 teams cut, 60 coaching positions. That's affected over 350 students. In the last eight years, the general supplies is down 60,000, and our program services over 2,500 students. Questions on athletics and physical education? Okay, we'll move on to the co-curricular. Co-curricular budget is very, very similar to last year. There really was no increase in anything for the co-curricular areas. Supply equipment and the contracted services are the same. I know that there are things that we still need to replace and buy, so this is kind of bare bones, and would like to have more money, but there isn't any, so... Okay, band. A good majority of the band is the salaries and the contracted services. If you look at the variance for salaries, in 2014-15, it included the district fund band activities. The donations are received, the budget will adjust to reflect those additional fundings, so if they're reinstated. Questions with band?
Not with band, but going back to the co-curricular, those salaries are, they must be in a different budget?
Yes, that would be the, all the co-curricular clubs, like DECA and...
Right, but where, because I don't see salaries on that chart.
Those stipends are paid in accordance with the teacher's contract, and so we didn't include them on the slide.
Okay.
We can get you that information if you'd like.
No, I just wondered, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't seeing, I assumed that, but I didn't want to assume, so...
Student activities, salaries are a good majority of it, and then there's very, very little supplies for the student activities. You'll see an increase of 26% under the salaries. And the, this year's budget did not include the contractual, so I believe that's the retro back.
Yeah, if you want, I can try to shed some light on that. It's a little confusing. So for the last three years, when we were not, we did not pay our teachers the proper amount for their, for these stipends, and it was because we were working with them to come up with a different way to do it. And at the end of the day, when we finally concluded that last year, we paid the retro, and we, and everything was adjusted. So what you see in the budget now is the contractual amounts to be paid, and so that's what's causing the difference.
Okay, and then we have inter-mural money, which is $13,206 for the year, and that's the majority of it, 100%. And that amount of increase is just for the contractual increase. And again, we'll continue to work with the booster clubs to help us financially get through. So over the last three years, we've had 16% of co-curriculars cut, 17 co-curricular positions over 40,000. All our national competition has been cut. Competition entry for travel expenses have been cut. And we, again, have a lot of things that need to be replaced that we, again, are struggling with money for, so... Any questions there? And the last area I have is health services. And you will see the majority of that is our nurse salaries. You will see an increase in one area, and that is the salaries. And this year, we had added two LPNs due to student needs at two of the schools, and so we had to add two LPNs in that area. So for next year, it will be the same, and that will be the only increase in the health services department. All the services are state mandated, so we are at bare minimum for the nurses in all our buildings.
Now, have you run into any issues with staffing in that area where, you know, you don't have enough? Just because we're at state mandate, it doesn't mean that we're...
No, but we obviously would take more if we could get them, but they are at bare minimum, you know.
How did everything?
We have one in each building, and based on numbers. Like, the high school has three, junior highs two, and one in every elementary building. Little schools have one with one LPN, and then we just added the two due to student needs, one-on-ones.
How are the parochials working out with that coverage?
No issues this year.
Perfect. Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I just want to say I know that your departments have taken a heavy hit over the last few years, and you've done a great job trying to keep costs down. Our students and parents and booster clubs have done a great job trying to help fill the gaps that we have with our budget, and it's noticed, and we appreciate that.
Thanks. Yeah, they've been great. Parents have been very supportive. Thank you. Next up will be John Ward with Maintenance and Operations.
Good evening. So I'm here tonight to present the Maintenance and Operations proposed budget for the 2015-16 fiscal year. First up, we have the maintenance. As you can see from the pie chart, there's quite a few different areas that's covered in that. I'll go into the breakdown. Overall, you know, if you look at the last five years, if you were to look at our budget, we pretty much have held the line across the board. You know, if we've done an increase, it's basically been a CPI increase over the last five years. Some things you will see that we did add this year, equipment. We bumped that up to 25,000. We still have about four vehicles that we need to replace, so for the last two years, we've been sharing vehicles, which is difficult with the shifts. The shifts come in at different times, there's an overlap, so it does create some inefficiencies in our operations. So this will help replace at least one vehicle. Other areas that you'll see that increased, biggest one, special project. If you remember, last year, we had 100,000 put in there, and really, we earmarked that for a cash-for-cash project. With the state, we can do a project, submit it to SED. If we complete it within that fiscal year, we're then given our aid for that project back in the next year. So it's a really good way to do some major work pretty efficiently. It was cut to 50,000 last year from 100,000. We, again, proposed to do 100,000, and this would be earmarked to do the upgrades at the main entrance at the high school, which are seriously needed up there, and will provide us a little more security as far as people coming and going at that building. So as I said, those were our main areas. The other one was salaries, which were contractual, and again, some of those are estimated based on negotiations in the upcoming fiscal year.
Are the salaries from the previous year, is that actual? Because I know we had some, or was that what you have budgeted?
That was actual last year.
Okay, because that was less than what we originally budgeted, correct?
Yeah.
There must have been a cost savings where, you know, we did some creative...
Yeah, John's, this number actually tracks very close to the actual expenditures for the 14-15 school year. John's done a really good job of managing his staff tightly to the budget.
Right. I just imagine that there was a cost savings last year, because you guys did kind of pull a rabbit out of a hat for us a couple of times.
Some, but as Don said, we're pretty, pretty close to our numbers. We don't vary very much. Moving into the grounds, again, grounds pretty much takes, you know, athletic fields, parking lots, that's the major, major area of that, and then the equipment to maintain that. Again, you'll see salaries did increase, and that's based on contractual obligations and estimates for the upcoming year. We do have another 25,000 in equipment that we had last year. Again, that's to replace a vehicle. We replaced, we've got three vehicles coming this spring, and hopefully we'll get three more next year, and that'll bring us back up to where we need to be. Moving into custodial. Again, a lot of different items in here, some not necessarily custodial. You'll see utilities, telephone, some other items fall in there that you wouldn't maybe think fell in under custodial. Main differences here, again, salaries, as we've stated previously. Probably one of the biggest items is utilities. Our previous bid, we belonged to a consortium with the state. That contract was up. We've just gone out for a new bid. We've received those bids in the last week, waiting to kind of see where those numbers fall. Right now, it appears we may not be as bad off as we thought. We budgeted what we were anticipating. Looks like those bid numbers might come in a little bit lower, so we might be able to cut that back a little bit. Again, equipment, again, is a vehicle and some floor equipment. Telephones, we did drop that. Historically, the last few years, we've been running about that, the number that we dropped it down to, about 60,000, so we could cut some there. And that's about it. So again, as I said, I pretty much covered these already. Those were our main differences in this year's proposed budget. Opportunities in savings, again, we continually look to see where we can cut, where we can save, where we can do some upgrades as money's available. You know, we try to take advantage of that, either to cut utility costs or improve on something, and we'll continue to look for those as we go. The other thing, we always do, any open positions we have, we look at them. Are we getting the biggest bang for our buck out of that position? Is there something we can do different to maybe, maybe improve on that? And we'll continue to do that as we move forward. Summary, you know, and I say this every year, we have a tremendously dedicated staff. You know, 2009, 2010, we took some huge hits in the department to try to, you know, alleviate some of the fiscal distress that we were in, and we've managed to do that and keep the same level of cleanliness, responsiveness that we could, that we did in the past, and we'll continue to do that, and that's really credit to the staff that we have working for us. Any questions? All right, thank you. I'll turn it over to Matt Conti with transportation.
Turn it off.
The big green button.
Which one is that?
The big green arrow.
There we go. Seems to be frozen.
I got it, let's see. Oh, there you go.
There you go. Hi, my name's Matt Conti, I'm the Director of Transportation. I'll be going over the budget for the transportation department. Okay, we can see that majority of our budget is for salaries. We are in the customer service trade, followed by the fuel, and then mobile equipment supplies. Okay, so we have some variances for salaries. Salaries estimated 1.4%. Those are contractual and also longevity. The second, really large one, is the contractual, which is transportation's under there. So outside transportation, we have a contractor that's doing service for us. This year, we have an additional student that's going to Utica, and we can, we believe that he's going to go next year along with the two other students. So we had that additional student, that's why we're anticipating the additional cost for next year in addition. The next is mobile equipment supplies. That's a 25% increase, or a $25,000 increase. We're just seeing that we're having the parts that need to be replaced are more computerized parts, meet emission standards. There's a lot of DOC filters, DPF filters, which are larger costs than we're anticipating in the past. So this budget that we're going through right now, there's a little stress on the budget, and we may go over budget this year with our parts, so we're anticipating an increase of $25,000. Oil and lubricants, the same situation. As the last three years, we have new engines that we're working on in our vehicles, so the last 36 vehicles that we have have a lot of emissions issues, so that we have to run the vehicles to get to a certain temperature to meet the EPA standards, and that's causing the engines to have some situations where we have to increase the oil change frequency from 6,000 to 4,000 miles, and that's what we've been doing, been very successful with that. So it's just a learning curve that the shop has learned, and is just taking advantage of and keeping things in line. Also, general supplies, we have an increase there. That just goes for our video cameras. What we're doing is purchasing hard drives for our video cameras. The technology's about five to six years old, and so we're ordering about 15 new hard drives so that we have a proper replacement, and we also have a larger spare factor. Everybody didn't have a problem with this except me. I guess kind of, so this is working on its own, I want everybody to know.
The back arrow, there's an arrow there. Hit that again. Get it?
Do we have to?
There you go. I'm going to go to garage.
You're good. So we have the garage. Again, water and utilities is the biggest part of our budget. We should just talk about, excuse me, the equipment. We had one piece of equipment last year that was $1,600. This year, we have a, one piece of equipment that we're purchasing is $4,500, and that's a, another lift for vehicles. It's an end lift, and so what we'll do is utilize that with the wheel pulls, and if there's any issue, if a lift is not available, we could utilize this mobile lift and just be more proficient at our position. We have one that's probably, I believe, eight years old. We repaired it over the years, and it's just at its final leg at this point. Again, like John says, we're going into a new bid for our utilities and water. We anticipate that we might have an increase, so we just budgeted additional funds for that. But as John and Don said, that we might best be in a better place than that. Building repairs, we have a 22% increase. What we're doing is systematically replacing the garage doors. Last year, we replaced the south side of the building in the shop, and we're doing the north side of the building this year. Again, the, this, these doors are 40 years old, just as old as the building, and what we were doing was replacing motors, and the doors are just too heavy for that, so we just think it's better to replace the whole kit, and also would be better proficiency for heating the shop, because these, again, being 40 years old, we have a lot of rust spots, we have the rubber around the doors that's just missing, so we think that would be a little bit better. Okay, those are the garage variance explanations. The next is Bosie's Transportation.
John set you up. He obviously tampered with that device.
I know he did that two years ago. We're back to it. Okay, Bosie's Transportation. Again, the only thing we really have going on with Bosie's Transportation increase is basically 8%. It's our special needs students go to Bosie's, they have field trips. We anticipate we're going to have an increase, an increase of students going there, and they'll have a, probably about a 2% or 3% increase on the cost. So we just allocated another $463. Again, contract transportation adjusted to the anticipated cost of service. Any questions about the things I reviewed?
I have a question about some of the repair thing. Maybe that's a better question for you, Don. Do we get money, like a capital improvement fund from the state for that, or...
Our transportation aid is approaching 76%, so we do get aid from the state for all transportation-related expenses, first of all. Second of all, as Matt's talked about, some of these new buses, one of the things Matt's negotiated with our new, the buses we're going to be proposing is a parts allowance, because we found that some of the parts are a little more expensive than we expected, and so I think, and this might be a little premature, but each bus might have $700 parts allowance that would come with it to compensate for some of the things we're dealing with. Now unfortunately, the buses we're repairing right now don't have that allowance, so we still have to continue with that repair, but we think that... But we think it'll, as time goes on, that'll diminish that cost.
Okay.
I don't know if that helps, but...
It does. Thank you.
Any other further questions? Okay, opportunities and savings, North Syracuse Transportation Department will continue to actively engage in shared services with numerous other Central New York School District transportation operations. We meet before the end of the year, then when we're actually routing, we'll get together again to see if anybody could help each other out. One example is we go to Batavia. Cortland City is actually helping us out with that particular run, and ESM. So all three of us will meet up at a certain location, and then the other district will take the students to Batavia and back, and then once they get into our district, one of our drivers would pick them up and deliver them. That's a savings of probably about $40,000 a year. We're continually utilizing our GPS and computer routing programs to assess our bus runs for routing and time proficiencies. Also, I have a committee together, my staff and I, of looking to see if there's a better GPS system out there, a more proficient one, to run with our computer program or routing program. So there is some software out there that's very compatible with it. So what we're doing right now is in a pilot program of seeing how it works, or the bells and whistles, and see what we need, and we're going to move on from there. It is kind of late for this budget year, but we're just looking to see what we'll do in the future. Summary, the North Syracuse Transportation Department is committed to maintain a safe environment where best practices ensure safe, proficient, on-time service to our community while containing our maintenance and operation expenditures. I believe we were very successful this year, and that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Can we bring John over to repair this?
There we go. All right, so I'm going to talk a little bit about technology. As you can see from the slide, a lot of things here, I'd like to point out a few. As everybody knows, we have 10 teaching assistants called Tech TAs in each of our buildings, and that's the blue section of the slide. We have a support staff at our district office that really covers the entire district, and that's another half a dozen folks that work in our centralized IT function but spend a lot of time in the field. That's the green piece of the pie. The gold piece, or yellow, depending on, gold I should say, is the state-aided computer hardware. And one of the things that you may be aware of is that we get state-aided computer hardware and state-aided software based on our student counts, our enrollment. So those numbers tend to fluctuate with our enrollment, and we've done a really good job of spending that aid effectively, particularly in these difficult budget times where we've had to make some tough choices. But that truly is a spend it or lose it. The way the state works this is if you, they give you a aided amount, you get that amount or you lose it. And our guys have really tried to make that money stretch, because the budget has been tight in other areas. Let me talk to you about the, some of the financial information. The salaries adjustments, the first line, those teaching assistants, as is mentioned in every presentation tonight, our contracts have a longevity clause, so as people hit certain milestones, that's why you see these weird percentages. Some go up 1.4 percent, some are going up 3 percent, and everywhere in between. And that just happens to be where the people are in terms of their longevity. Our HR department does a great job of giving us detailed budgets by person, so this calculates what their longevity is, as well as an estimated increase, because 11 of our 12 bargaining units are under negotiation right now. I want to point out, though, you see that support salaries are going up and teaching aids are going down. You may remember that we recently took a half-time person at the district office that was 10 months and made them a 12-month full-time person, and in order to finance that, we cut some Bosie's services. And so we cut out a person that was providing some network support, and we felt that this would be more important in terms of servicing our customers, and so we made that trade. And when you add up the variances on this page, including the overtime, and in conjunction with our Bosie's budget, you see that that's a net, actually a net savings. There's not a lot else to talk about in terms of technology variances on this portion of the presentation. Any questions on technology? See, there's my comment about the personnel changes. Couple of things I wanted to just point out. We're working very closely with Bosie's in technology. One of the things that we're fortunate, we've got the Regional Information Center here that services over 50 school districts, and so we're able to work with them to identify best practices, to harvest ideas and support for projects. And we buy a certain amount of our services through a co-sir, and what it allows us to do is it allows a portion of our team to be variable. So as is indicated in the second bullet point there, that we traded a network administrator for an instructional technology person. And what that allows us to do is, right now, our teachers really need support in the classroom. And so between the work that our STLE folks are doing, as well as our instructional technologists, we feel like we're able to get in front of teachers and provide more support than we ever have been able to before, and Bosie's is helping us with that. As you know, this year, we finally finished our Cisco phone system, and we're hoping that through that, we can increase our customers, our internal customers, our employees' efficiency, as well as enhanced security. We're piloting Google for Education right now, and we just finished a pilot for Microsoft 365, and we're implementing a new IT request process. So we got a lot of things that we think will make our IT department perform a little better for our team next year, and I'm anxious to report on our success as we go through the One thing that the board's, I think, aware of, that we have a technology committee for the district, and again, I just can't, we're so fortunate to have that STLE grant money that we got this year, because that's allowed some folks to step up and provide leadership to that committee. And that first bullet point up there is the mission that our technology committee has adopted in support of our district-wide mission. And over the next year, we'll be working on fleshing out our detailed goals, working to align our building technology committees with our district technology committee, and finally, we're anxiously awaiting our Smart Schools funding, which is a significant amount of funding that can be used to support our technology initiatives. We're waiting for the Smart School Review Board to give us details on that. And that's technology. Any questions on technology in general? Next, I'm going to talk about the business office. And this budget is exactly that. This represents our entire business office staff, as well as the costs associated with the various audit activities that we engage in, and certain contractual relationships we have. People like fiscal advisors that help us with our financings and whatnot. The variances in this area are not terribly significant. The only change is, really, we've kept our budgets the same year over year, with the exception of our salaries, which are based again on longevity, as well as estimated increases for the contract. Debt service is a big, if you added up this entire pie here, it's almost $10.9 million. And what this represents is all of the debt, it's the district's mortgage, basically. It's all the debt that the district has for all the capital projects we've done. And there's, this entire pie is all about principal and interest payments, and we've been very fortunate, as have other municipalities around the state, that the interest rate environment has been so low, because that's really helped us manage our debt service As you can see from this next slide, there really are, there is a number of fluctuations, but that has to do with the refinancing activity that we're constantly engaged in. I referenced earlier that we use fiscal advisors, and we're always looking at projects and refinancing projects to get the best terms and match up those financings with the state aid that we get. And so, at the end of the day, our debt service for next year is about the same as it is for this year. And remember, we concluded a couple of projects recently, the capital project at the high school being one, the roof project that we recently completed, where we worked on a number of roofs over the last several years. And those things are all factored in here in terms of looking at the permanent financing for those projects. Again, nominal increases in each of those areas. Benefits, benefits is a huge area for the district. As you can see, health and TRS and ERS make up probably the biggest pieces of the pie, along with FICA, our social security. And those are the primary components of benefits. We've seen this year that, fortunately, we've seen a reduction in our TRS and ERS, largely due to the favorable stock market performance. Those rates have both come down, as I previously reported to the board. Our TRS rate went from over 17 percent, 17.53 percent, down to 13.26 percent of payroll, and our ERS went from 20.1 percent down to 18.2 percent of payroll, and that's great. Our health insurance, unfortunately, we're in a climate where health costs, not only for our district but for everybody, continue to increase, and we're working diligently with our Health Oversight Committee to manage those costs as effectively as we possibly Overall, our benefits are up about 4.9 percent, or about $2.2 million. I think I commented on the other items already. I think that's it. Any questions on benefits? You know, we, I'll just, I'll make a few just general comments about opportunities. As you know, we have worked hard, as folks have retired, to reevaluate our staff and reevaluate responsibilities. We've adjusted our business office staffing to try to become more efficient, cost-efficient, and more effective at the same time. We're very happy with our, we've got relatively new internal auditors and external auditors, and they're working in school districts around the state, and they brought us a lot of good suggestions on how we can improve our business operations, and we think that's a good thing. And we're on our second full year of using WinCap, which is new software for the business office, and I think that's going to continue to help us identify and implement efficiencies in the way we do things. I think these are the goals for the support organization in terms of supporting our strategic plan. We take our responsibility of being transparent and accountable, and our responsibilities for maximizing state aid and grants, and working on this budget process, so that it can be, you know, prepared in a timely and accurate manner. And that's pretty much all I have. Any questions? No? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you, Don. Yeah, I was just going to say...
John's going to lead the way on the facilities report, if that's okay. I'll chime in if necessary.
As long as you trust him, that's okay.
Oh, yeah. John knows way more than I do.
All right, so tonight, I'm going to update on our facilities and what we're proposing and what we're looking at in the future. I will say, Don, and that please jump in if I wander our target. I think as we look at this tonight, two things the board needs to look at is, you know, I think we're looking for your approval to proceed forward with the timelines that we're going to propose, and any input you may have on these projects. So the first project we're going to look at is this building here, the North Syracuse Junior High, and the first topic would be the roof replacement in this area right here, the auditorium. And I guess I would say just look up, and pretty much that would explain the water spots, other items. This roof is far past its useful life. We've had leaks in the past. I'm pretty sure we're going to have leaks this spring and probably leaks in the fall, but it is definitely time to replace this. Another piece of that is, that we would like to incorporate, is the replacement of the main gymnasium floor. That floor, the best, by knowledge, is '70s, maybe early '80s. It's taken a tremendous amount of abuse. The guards that practice in there and have their competitions in there are very hard on the floors. We just replaced 20 boards over this past break, and there's, they're paper thin, and there is no fixing. So that would be incorporated in this as well. And then the last piece would be a security upgrade, where we would do exactly what we did at the high school with the intruder locks in conjunction with the stadium project. We would replace all the door hardware in this building with intruder locks. Timeline for that, we really need to get started now. We're looking to do a vote in the fall, and there was conversation back and forth with a vote in conjunction with a budget. The reality of it is that with the timeline for SED to approve a project, we would never get it done in the summer anyway. So we're really looking at the summer of 2016 for both the roof and the gym floor. That is a summer job to replace the gym floor. Probably the only drawback out of that is, you know, we could get approval in the fall, and we talked to cabinet, and I did not think about this at the time. If we did vote in it in May, we could submit it, get approval sometime in the fall. It would give us the opportunity to do the intruder locks, you know, maybe by the first of the year 2016. So that's probably the only drawback out of that. The other two pieces, they're happening in the summer regardless. So as we work down through the process, we get forward approval, bomb referendum would be sometime in the fall, submit right after that, hopefully get approval early spring, get bids right out, and then do that work in the spring of '16. Preliminary budget, the roof replacement cost, that's a very solid number. The gym floor, that may be a little low due to the nature of what's going on. We're kind of going back and forth. Do we want to, right now, that floor just sits on sleepers. We're thinking maybe putting plywood on top of the sleepers and then the floor on that to provide a little more stability and strength for those. So that may fluctuate a little bit. Hardware number's a good number. The design-construction contingency, I'll be honest, normally you'll see me bring that in at 5 percent, maybe 7 at the most. It's a little high right now for a couple of reasons. If, some of you will remember back about 2003, 2004, the back gym at this building flooded, and we had to replace it. We did find asbestos underneath there, so there was some removal fees incorporated. I'm not sure if we are or we're not, and we won't know that until we really get in there and do some looking. So that's really the main reason there, and it kind of trickles down into the next line, the architect-engineer fees, testing and that. Same reason. The other piece in there is, if we're going to replace this floor, we have to come up with something that we can put on that to protect it from the guards' practice. I've already talked to Mr. Bridnarsky, the architects, and are looking into it as well. Our dilemma is, I know there's products out there, but how quick and how fast can you get it down and get it up? So that's going to be a tricky thing to...
Is there like a linoleum inlay or anything you can put on every size wood?
Well, what they have right now is a piece of vinyl, for lack of a better term. It doesn't protect the bedding from the equipment they use. If you've ever been up to SRC at OCC for a graduation, they lay some, it's kind of a thick padded material over it. But again, I think that's like, you know, an eight-foot section that folds up, you've got to move them, and unfortunately... gotta move them, and unfortunately, with a guard, you've got, you know, basketball practice before it, they're coming in after, so time is, and we certainly don't have the bodies to, you know, send ten people in there and do this. So we're gonna have to really do our homework and see what we can find that's gonna meet that need and make everybody happy. So that's some of the numbers why they're where they are. Any questions on, let me go through the funding really quick. So with a million dollars in our aid ratio, it works out that our contribution's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That'll come from fund balance. State aid, as it shows, is eight hundred and fifty thousand, and we're proposing a one million dollar project. So this would be done with no increase to the local taxpayer. Any questions on this particular piece? Moving into the next one would be Bear Road Elementary School. Much-needed renovation over there. It is our last and only building that hasn't had anything done since it was originally built. And this would be a complete building renovation. Again, we'll look at separating, similar to Smith Road, separating the bus loop, the parent loop, and parking, so we're not walking back and forth with the students. If you've been over there at Arrival Dismissal, it's a nightmare over there. And there, unfortunately, right now is no good answer without doing some major work. And part of that, to accomplish that, would be to relocate the entry in the media center. And I think preliminary, we're kinda looking at putting that over by the playground area and relocating the playground. That'll give us some room to do that bus parent loop and keep the parking where it is, given our boundaries that we have. Timeline for this? Really, we need to start now. There's a lot of programming, a lot of meeting with the different departments in the building, determining, you know, what those needs are, what we're looking at, grade, size, and that. So we really need to start those conversations now with the staff, looking again for board approval in the fall of 2016, with a referendum sometime shortly after. Again, same, similar to the roof, construction documents go in right after, get approved sometime before the spring, we'll get bids out, and hopefully we start work soon after that summer of '17. Hopefully, we'll be where we would start. Project budget, again, these are very early, early numbers, somewhere between fourteen to sixteen million. Funding, I think the big piece here, and Don's done a great job with this, is we have a lot of debt coming off in that '16-'17 timeframe, approximately one point eight million dollars. And the idea is to use that to offset the local share. And then in the next few years after that, there's more debt that will be coming off. So, you know, as we get closer to that, that time to really make some final decisions, we'll be able to firm up those numbers and give you some real accurate numbers of where we sit. Any questions? One thing I do wanna add, I'm sorry. Another big piece in this is the Smart Bond Act. I know you've heard about this many, many times. You know, how this plays into that, and can we carve out a piece of that project and use some of this money to offset some of the expenditures is, you know, anybody's guess right now. But that's certainly something we're gonna look at. Rumors I'm hearing is they're gonna release that information April 1st. I don't, I don't know if that's a joke on us or not, but that's what I'm hearing. So hopefully, we'll know some more information on how that's gonna work here very soon. And that's it. Any questions?
Thanks, John.
No, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Annette?
John and Don, I wanna thank you for putting that together. And I think we just need sort of a nod from the board to continue working on this with the timelines that were presented. We did give consideration to the project at the junior high being on the vote this May, but with things being so unknown right now in terms of the governor's state aid or lack of state aid, we didn't really wanna complicate this vote with that, especially considering that the, I don't know.
Especially considering that the work most likely would not get done any sooner. If it was a little warmer out, we would probably be getting rain done in here. And I'm not saying that as a joke, or it's, our roof here is in very sad condition. So we'd like to move forward. I think the sooner we can start talking about preparing for Bear Road. And again, we've waited this long to take a look at when some debt's going to come off so that we can do these projects in a manageable way.
So are you, are you looking for feedback now? Okay. I'm going to abstain from Bear Road, for obvious reasons. But...
We don't need a vote, right?
No, but I just, I won't share my opinion at this time, because I have students in that building. I would be directly benefiting from that. So you know what my concerns are there, because they're the same ones you just expressed. So as far as working on this roof, we've had damage to equipment in here. I think that's gonna end up saving us money in the long run, so I'm, you know, I'm two thumbs up for both the other projects. I think everybody's in agreement, so...
Yeah, I agree. It looks like, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. We've got work to do.
Okay, now, we have no comments from the audience. But I do wanna say that the board welcomes comments from anybody that's here at meetings, as well as those that are unable to attend. So you can bring your concerns by emailing or mailing your comments to the district clerk, which is the district offices at 5355 West Half Road. She passes, Connie passes on, all communication that she receives to us as board members. We welcome your comments and input. They're very important to us. But it's also important for you guys to keep in mind the source of the information for us board members. We will not review or take into consideration any anonymous letters or mailings. We believe that it's very important for the credibility purposes to know that someone has, for purposes, to know that someone has signed their name to a comment letter. In our view, an anonymous letter lacks credibility because it cannot be verified. Many times, we may reach out to the individual who has sent us the communication to verify or ask for clarifying information. And we can't do that if the letter or email has not been signed. It's also important for us to know that the letter is coming from a district resident or whether it's coming from somebody outside of the district. And we will not know this, again, if it is done on an anonymous basis. So for these reasons, the board has not in the past and will continue to, in the future, act upon anonymous submissions. If confidentiality is your concern, we can assure you that we will keep the identity of anyone who provides information to the board as confidential as possible, and we thank you for your cooperation with us. Okay, but there are no comments from the audience, so do we have board committee reports? Mary?
We have a number of policies on tonight's agenda to be voted on, and we're doing a great job. We have a great team on our policy committee, and I appreciate everyone that is participating. And our next meeting is March 31st.
Thank you. And Bob is not here for legislative committee. Does anybody have any comments? Bob's not here. The only thing, the only two things that I wanted to mention was, we had Optimist Awards as well as the Wall of Distinction. Both of them were honoring people that have exemplified community service and things of that nature. The Optimist Awards are for the oldest or exiting grade in our school, so that was kinda neat to attend that ceremony, I believe it was last Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday of last week. And that's something that our teachers take the time to nominate the students. They're not required to do that. And it was kinda neat to see that they were told three sentences, and quite a few of them went above and beyond with explaining, because the kids were that great. The Wall of Distinction, again, that was a great ceremony, and it's, you know, an honor to live in a community that people take so much pride in.
Thank you. Although he's been excused from the evening, the meeting this evening due to being at a conference, I do wanna thank Dan Bowles for all of his work for the Wall of Distinction ceremony. It was quite an event. Just a couple of things I wanna point out. You've heard me talk all season about the girls' basketball team, and they played an unbelievable game in the Section III semifinals last Saturday evening at SRC Arena up at OCC. And we're very pleased to say that they will be playing for the sectional title this Saturday evening at 6:30 at SRC Arena, so we wish them well. And the last thing I wanna mention, the board might recall that we talked about a new course at the high school next year on financial literacy when they went through the program of studies not too long ago. And I've had the opportunity to sit in on a few meetings, and that's really coming along. We're working jointly with Core Federal Credit Union. The meeting that I attended last Friday, we have an expanded group of student board of directors who are working on the setup and the location. They're working jointly with King &amp; King Architects and John Ward from the M&amp;O Department. They are involving student classes, the graphic art classes at the high school, to come up with a logo for the credit union, and a lot of work is underway. It's quite exciting to see a group of high school students take ownership and actually work on planning this out. So as we continue, I will keep you informed, and we look forward to that being open in the fall.
Okay, thank you. A routine action item, do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the regular board meeting? Mr. DiNoprio, second, Mr. Harrington, it's all in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, we have a couple of tax certainties as well as policies. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns with any of those? No? So can I have a motion to take A, B, C, D, E, F, and G as a group?
They have several roll calls.
I have to have roll calls for both A and B? Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, so let's, a motion for A? George, Mike, all in favor? Roll call.
Patrick Saboda.
Yes.
Michael DiNoprio.
Yes.
George Harrington.
Yes.
Elizabeth Cash.
Scott McClintock.
Yes.
And Mary Scanlon.
Yes.
And then the same, do I have a motion for B? Scott McClintock, second, Liz Cash.
Patrick Saboda.
Yes.
Michael DiNoprio.
Yes.
George Harrington.
Yes.
Elizabeth Cash.
Scott McClintock.
Yes.
And Mary Scanlon.
Yes.
Okay, now, do I have a motion for C, D, E, F, and G? Liz, second, Scott, all in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, do we need a motion for executive session for personnel reports? No? Okay, can we take A and B as a group? Mr. DiNoprio, second, Mr. Harrington, all in favor? That's unanimous. Now we're going to adjourn into executive session for the opportunity to make a motion to go into executive session to identify in general terms... Oh, wait a second. I'm reading the wrong thing. Where is it? No, but I'm looking. No. Here it is. I got it. Motion to move an executive session for the purpose of hearing a parental appeal on a superintendent's decision to receive an update on negotiations of the North Syracuse Education Association, the teachers assistants and licensed practical nurses, and the principals' bargaining units to receive an update on legal matter relative to potential litigation and the review of the employment record of 23 individuals with action to follow on the parental appeal. Who have a motion? Mr. DiNoprio, second, Mary, all in favor? That's unanimous. And then the students, we can sign your papers.